Well, good evening, everyone. At this time, I will call the Public Candy Board of Commissioners July 26th, public hearing to order on millage rate. And again, I will call our financial director, Tabitha Pollard, to open us up with some information about the millage rate.
Well, afternoon. We'll do this one more time so that the viewing public can see. And we have a system like --
Where you get this from?
No, I watched online. Okay, okay. Well, we'll go fairly fast then. Okay, so every year, we have to go through this process. The tax assessors complete the digest values. They send out information to citizens. They have 45 days to appeal. We get the assessed value as a total of that from the digest. Just a few definitions, assessed values, taxable values. So fair market value, 40 percent is what we use for the assessments. Gross digest is 40 percent of the grand total, 40 percent of those values. Can y'all not see it? Sorry, I don't know what to do. Did you see it this morning?
Yeah. We'll shake it just a little.
I'd like to see it, yeah.
If you're around.
We'll just turn around.
We'll see if you turn around. Yeah, okay. So we have an assessed value, the total value of all the property, fair market value, and our assessments are valued at 40 percent of that fair market value. Gross digest is that each property in total for the gross digest of the county. And the net digest is the 40 percent that remains after the exemptions. Millage rate is $1 per thousand of assessed value. So you have your assessment times your millage rate equals your tax levy. Taxpayer bill graph says if that tax levy is going to increase because of either of the two factors, then you have to hold three public -- advertise a tax increase and hold three public hearings. So our assessed value and our millage rate is staying the same, but it will result in some increase, in an increased tax levy. So we have to advertise a five-year history. This tells you what the digest has done over the past five years, specifically to the right when you get to 2018. Down at the bottom, our total value is 4.5 million, so that's the value of a mill. Times the 6.5 gives you 29.5 million in as a tax levy. That is a $2.5 million increase from the previous year. And we will hold one more public hearing on August 14th at 9:30, and we will adopt at 2 o'clock on August 14th. Rollback, so the state says you have to calculate a rollback. That's, again, to get you to a tax, a neutral tax levy. Our rollback this year is 6.079. And that just balances any assessment with a reduction in the millage rate to equal the same levy as we had last year. We have advertised the notice of property tax increase. That gives the value of what that increase is, 6.93 percent. It, again, leaves the millage rate alone, and it takes into account the increase for the assessments. We will hold three public hearings, one this morning at 9:30, this one, and one on August 14th at 9:30. The results for a home of $150,000 that has a homestead would be approximately 2526 for the M&amp;O. And if it's a non-homestead of $125,000, would be 2105. So that's just an explanation of the advertising. The historical value of a mill, in 2008, we were 4.5 million. In 2018, we're 4.5 million. We obviously dipped between that time and came back up. We've offset that in some years with increases to the millage rate and then reductions to the millage rate to get back to the 6.5. Graphically, that's maybe easier to see. In 2011 through 2016, we had a balancing act. We had reduced quite a few services. We had reduced costs as much as we could. And now we're trying to restore some of those services. And at 6.5, we're back to 2008 values. Surrounding millage rates, these are nine surrounding millage rates. Again, I chose FAN because of their credit rating and some similarities to Paulding. Cobb, as you know, these are 2017 Cobb for 2018 increased their millage rates and for M&amp;O, and some of the others may do so as well. I believe we're all probably going through this process right now. Surrounding digest comparisons. This just takes their digest and compares it to our digest. There are a lot of factors involved in this, as we discussed this morning. Paulding has a 79 percent residential and a 12 percent commercial, which puts most of the tax bill on the residents. What does this mean to the homeowner? In a 2017 value of 169,000, about 10 percent increase would bring the value to 182,000. And the part that we're holding this public hearing for is the M&amp;O, so it's been a highlighted 30 through 28 increase from the previous year. The debt and the fire and the school. Debt is obviously to cover what debt exists. So, and fire covers, is a special district. To find the fire function, and then the school board has, I believe, already set their millage rate. So where do my tax dollars go? 62 cents on a dollar goes to the school. 21 cents on a dollar goes to fund the maintenance and operations of the county. 7 cents on a dollar goes to debt. And 10 cents on a dollar goes to the fire department, fund their operations. Of that M&amp;O, the property taxes fund approximately 40 percent of the budget. So the other 60 percent are from other revenues. Some are other taxes, some are charges for services, some are intergovernmental, fines and fees. But basically, the maintenance and operations budget breaks down to 35 percent public safety and 24 percent public works and 21 percent general government. And that gets the bulk of the expenses. And unless you have any questions.
Anybody have any new questions?
I do.
I think James, I was fixing to go back and look at an email you and I, that you sent me, it's been months ago. But if I remember correctly, back in 2008, we had 64,000 parcels. Am I wrong? And now we have, like, 64,038 parcels. Now we have just a tad over 65,000 parcels.
We got about 67,000.
67,000 parcels now. Okay. That must have been a couple of years ago.
Okay.
There's not a whole lot. About 3,000 or parcels roughly, maybe.
Correct.
In what we had 10 years ago.
Correct.
Did we talk about, we're talking, I like to look at numbers. And we talk about citizens where we're at about 130,000. I think we're probably at 100. That was 10 years ago. Now we're at about 160,000. And 64,000 parcels, maybe we're at 67,000 parcels today, 10 years later. And I also had somebody else send it to me. You got this for me, you and Mr. Watson. And I got looking at the, where we're going to be when you look back at 2008. This year, we're collecting the same roughly at what we're at, the 6.5, the same amount of dollars, within a half million dollars, let's say, of taxes that we're collecting. So I went back and looked at the school system. And what you sent me, James, actually pulls back to 2007. And they're within also about a half million dollars of what they were collecting in 2008, I guess, if I looked at that. I'm looking at 2007 at 73 million, but in 2008, it was 77 million. And that's what they're looking at today. So it's like we've come all the way back from 2008, both of us, the school system and us, at the rate we're at. And I was just saying this morning that I think there's a cost to doing business. And I think we've gotten back to that level roughly. But you also have to look at what the school system had back then as far as the number of kids in the school. And then what we're looking at today versus, we had 130,000 people back then. Now we've got 165,000 people with 3,000 more parcels. There's just more to, to me, there's more to look at than just the number. But I just want the citizens to know that. Because again, I know I beat that drum to death this morning, but I think there's a cost to doing, a cost to doing business and the cost of providing the service. And I think you have to take everything into account when you look at that. Thanks for the information that you got today. I appreciate it. Both right here sitting on the desk and by email.
I see no one coming forward, but I see Ms. Wilkins.
Can I just stand here?
I'd rather you go over and sign in.
Okay, I forgot about that.
Speak for the whole county, says.
One of you's first time. Which services were scaled back during the recession that we have now, once again?
Stormwater was zero. So you want to add any more DOT from the history around here?
We eliminated utility coordination as well. Parkhead.
Stormwater, utility, coordination. Tabitha could probably lightly go over, because it was a trim back of a lot of things.
There's a lot, there are a lot.
Community development lost personnel.
Community development was quite a reduction. Parks and Rec, we had reduced. DMT had quite a significant reduction.
There was a day in March on the layoffs. That layoffs had multiple departments presence.
There were furlough days.
Those were taken all countywide. As far as services, the libraries, they were cut back. A separate recreation, didn't have separate stations.
Right.
And DOD and the sheriff took his share of the public safety, although their demand increased, so they had to take quite as much as some of the others. But it was primarily, your larger departments were, for the most part, was DOT took a pretty bit. And it was, and we adjusted everything that we could and moved it to SPOSS. Well, what happened when you moved it to SPOSS was then you don't have money for any projects that are, you know, to expand roadways or to widen them or intersections or anything. So that's just a rough leak.
And then a lot of the cutbacks also were just quit updating equipment.
Yeah.
I jokingly say, you duct taped them, zip tied them, super glued them together. You just, that's what you did to keep things going, so. And you could do that so long. And then finally, that stuff quits working. So when things, you know, here we are today. So not only are we trying to get those services back, some of which, in my view, probably should not have been cut. I think you, I think when you go through tough times, you have to trim. You might be able to trim your grocery budget at home, but you don't cut it. And so now we're trying to bring those back, some that are very much needed to be back. And then, of course, in community development, we're building houses and inspecting houses. It's a whole lot different ballgame than what it was. So some things you could trim, and it didn't affect you as much. But now that it's coming back, you've got to have those folks back. And now that you wore out your equipment because you didn't replace certain things certain years, that's what's costing us now some too.
Thank you. And also regarding the commercial tax base, I heard someone talk about it, and I can't recall all the details. But can someone explain again why counties like Polk are ahead of us as far as industry and infrastructure goes? Wasn't there some sort of agricultural grant that some counties accepted that Paulding did not years ago?
I'm not familiar with that. It may have been sewer. It may have been sewer. Polk is ahead of us because that Rockmark Corridor has a fair amount of industry.
I believe it was in the '60s and before any of us was here. And asking other counties, because there's, our infrastructure, not in place, was sore. And even county water, where other counties are ahead of us, we, for some reason, I can't tell you why, we didn't take that grant. Other counties did.
Okay, so it is true then, which puts us at a disadvantage today. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mary James. I'm in case one. I actually work for the Cobb County Tax Commissioner's Office, so I'm very familiar with millage rates and assessments. As I'm looking at this, I'm really shocked that we actually have as low a millage rate as we do here in Paulding. Knowing that we are only at 12 percent, most of our, you know, other counties' budgets and rely on businesses to take care of the citizens. And unfortunately, we don't have that here in Paulding. I know we're at a disadvantage because we're not on the interstate. There's other things we just don't have here. The infrastructure is not here. We discussed that a lot in message boards, going back and forth. But one thing I do want to discuss, and I know Chris Willard touched on it a little bit today, is the homestead exemption. I know we do have a $2,000 homestead exemption in fire, school, and the county. One thing I'd like to mention is, other counties usually don't put exemptions in the fire portion of the bill. I personally wouldn't mind taking that out, just because I don't think that you should get tax breaks on services like fire. I really don't. I think we do need to look at maybe reevaluating our homestead exemption. I actually went online and did some research. Out of Chair Ke, Cobb, Douglas Carroll, Harrelson, Polk, Bartow, Floyd, and Paulding, only Paulding and Harrelson are the only two that don't have a floating homestead. A floating homestead, if you guys aren't familiar with it, helps when the assessed value goes up. It doesn't impact the citizens who actually own and occupy their homes here in Paulding. Another thing is, a lot of the school tax exemptions start at age 62, whereas ours starts at age 65, and we only get half. And then the other half is 70, I think, if I'm correct. I would really encourage you guys to maybe look at reevaluating the homestead. It's important to the citizens that live here. You know, we work, play, shop, eat in this county. And I think we deserve to have a little bit of a break. And I know it's hard because it, looking at the budget, most of the money is coming from the properties here in Paulding. I commend you guys, the budget's very hard. It's not an easy thing to do. And I know you've got a lot of opinions on how you can do it better or what services we need and what services we don't. We love living in Paulding. There's a lot to offer. You know, we moved here from Oklahoma City. And we Googled, actually, the best places to live in Georgia. And Paulding was one of the places that came up, just because it was an upcoming city at the time under county. And unfortunately, it's kind of seems like it's leveled out. And I know the housing bubble has, and it impacted us a lot. But, you know, I know there's things that you can't cut from a budget. There are things that needs to be taken care of. Like you said, you know, we put it off for so long, things have got to be repaired. But I think if anything needs to happen, and we need to definitely look at the exemptions and see what we can do to kind of help relieve. You know, it doesn't affect the rentals. It doesn't affect businesses. So you'll still get that revenue from there. I was looking at my bill, and I was trying to figure it out. From when we applied for homestead until now, if I actually had that flow in place, I would actually be saving $500 this year on my taxes. Instead of it being 1,500, I'd be paying 1,000. So that would have been a nice little breakup in the county. I know that's not something that you guys, that happened back in '99 when the exemptions weren't in place. I don't know how long it's been since you guys have voted on homestead exemptions. I'm not that familiar with it, but. It's been a while.
1982.
Oh, gosh, yeah. So I would think that might be something you guys might want to look at. We're a little behind the other counties. It seems like they're, they're offering a little better deal than what we have here in Paulding. I think it would help the citizens not hate the millage rate increase as much. But, you know, I understand assessments. I explained it all day long. I know it has to happen. Actually, I know Lady Spoke this morning said that her house couldn't sell for that. But knowing, being in the market that I'm in, they're actually selling for about 20 percent more than what the assessed values are on our property. So I don't, I didn't agree with that, so I just wanted to point that out. But, you know, we do have a low millage rate considering, you know, that we're taking on most of the taxes here. So I commend you guys, you're doing a great job. And thank you for serving the county.
Thank you, Agent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Klett, we've talked about homestead several different times in ways.
Joe Fui started, Vernon corrected me. He said he thought that agriculture grant was in the early '70s.
No, you don't have agriculture.
Well, if he said agriculture was in '70s, what else?
Thank you.
Somebody made a note that her assessment needs to be increased. Not 20 percent.
129, I'm sure. I'm good right now, thank you.
I had a question. There was a lot of online chatter in the last week or two about a big investment that the budget has in the transfer station. And we heard a nice presentation this morning. It convinced me that there's work that needs to be done there. But the question that comes to my mind, having heard, number one, that it's right up against Seven Hills and Nature Walk, and number two, that it seems to be almost completely obsolete. Is there any discussion going on about moving that transfer station before you rebuild it, number one, and number two, privatizing it?
We have discussions. We, and we mentioned this morning, there's two other sites that were authorized and recommended to locate. And Mr. Green and I have considered places really right out here to the west. But nobody wants them near their house, you know, even, even though they're just pushing trash into a truck and taking it out to Cedar Town. You've got bad kind of taste.
No offense to Cedar Town. Right.
Right, yeah. They make plenty of money off of it.
When, if the budget is approved with that investment, how quickly would it be made? Because it seems like once you spend the $2 million, that kind of cuts off that discussion. I mean, are they waiting with the, waiting to bid out a contract to spend that money? Or is it?
Well, we don't even have a budget yet, so we don't even know if it's going to be in there. I mean, it's in the chairman's budget, which is really all our budgets that we get in budget.
I know, but I'm listening. Listen.
Go ahead, Scott.
We are in the final stages of designing the site improvements. And a couple of things I'd like to mention about that. Of course, the obvious one is, we've got to take care of our trash in this county somehow. I think it's maybe less than a third we actually transport of what we generate. So we're not actually dealing with our fair share of trash. It's actually going to other counties right off the holler. What does a little, what a little bit does end up staying in the county, at least for a brief period of time, goes to the transfer station, is immediately hauled out. And until we locate another site, it's not prudent really to abandon what we've got. The other problem we have is we have a traffic problem at our existing transfer station. It's not terribly efficient. So you heard a long story about that. And it's all true. But it is a very dilapidated facility. It's a poor representation of Paulding County. I think if we're going to do anything, we need to do it the best we can. With that being said, it is prudent to make sure that investment is wise. There are a couple of things about that I think that are something we can't really delay. And that is the scale systems. Those systems break down constantly. It's a very old scale. And we've got to replace it. They are somewhat portable, so I don't see any reason not to continue with purchasing two scales so we can actually handle two-way traffic. That's just a customer service thing that helps us deal with the traffic. It helps us take some of the pressure off of our staff up there that are trying to manage and keep people calm while they wait patiently to pay their money and done. That's efficiency. That scale is key to that. And that's a major part of that investment. Probably upwards of a third of that is the scale system and the scale house, which is also portable. So if we do locate another site, or we do have some that wants to privatize, there's a potential we can pull up a lot of those components and move them. So a good bit of that, I think, is not wasted even if we proceed forward and then later decide to move a site. Also in our plan is our population continues to grow. So we have one site today as we continue to grow. That one site needs to be, if it is moved, it still needs to be larger. That's a whole nother problem. If somebody provides a great site or helps us get one approved, and then we have a solution, then maybe we can start thinking about a transition. But I'd say we're going to be here for a few years at least, and we need to go ahead with what we've got. There is a pause point. We do have a building that is needing repair. That's the actual transfer building where the customers pull in and drop the refuse. That building needs work. The 1.2 does not cover a new building or the repairs to that building. We will be looking at a next budget year or so to add a second building and then be able to shift traffic back and forth and manage it better. I think there's a pause point, though. Before we put another building on that site, maybe that is the time. So as far as the schedule, what you mentioned, we are rapidly approaching the point where we're going to make a decision, bring you bids on that site, make sure they're in budget, and then ask you to approve them. So I would say between now and mid-fall, we'll have that in front of you. And then there can be some more discussion leading up to that point. If a private company wants to step forward and say they've got a great idea for us, be glad to talk to them. There was rumors somebody was going to bring us a proposal, but we haven't seen that yet. If we can privatize and they can do it as efficient as we can, or save us money, or bring us a little bit of income, that would be great. That has been done in other counties with some mixed results. So we're, I think, I'd recommend we be open to those options, a privatized facility. It is good, and I think Paulding may have mentioned that we do can control and make sure that we offer our citizens that do not use a trash service a place to come and bring their large items at a reasonable rate. And we do have kind of a good thing going, I think, for our citizens there, keeping our rates low. It is also, though, kind of in a bad place if you're trying to serve the entire county. And so something a little more central for a second site or a replacement site would be something we look to in the future. But I don't think there's anything we could do more difficult than trying to locate a new transfer site or a new place to handle that. We tried it in Dallas years ago a couple of times, probably dating back from the '70s. Industrial Boulevard North was one of the locations. It became a very long, drawn-out thing. It became a very long, drawn-out thing, even in an industrial area. And then we had this great location up on Landfill Road, also known as Grant's Chapel burg, and then later Seven Hills Boulevard. So it's been there for a long time, and it's worked well for us. It no longer is an open dump for household trash. So it's a lot better situation for the residents than what it was back in the early nineties when it first opened, with actually trash being pushed around and covered up with dirt. So I think that it is a waning thing up there, but for the time being, until we have a solution, I think we've got to at least provide reasonable customer service and take care of the equipment that's breaking down, and have modern technology like computers that print your receipt, or email you, and actually maybe take a debit card, that kind of thing, that would be great. And I think it would help us to be better servants to our citizens and offer it more efficiently. But again, we have a few months before we really pull the trigger on that, and I gave you an awful long answer. Not quite as thorough as Tommy's answer, but I'll answer a few questions. You can add the answer anymore if you've got them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Isn't there a place kind of out on 120 going to the canyon on the left out there?
Well, dog.
Even if that's what we wanted to do, the time that it's going to take to locate a place and get through that process, it's going to be a good while to do that. I mean, it's a tough thing to do, so...
How you said somebody thought the idea of privatizing our landfill in recent years, months?
We've had some people discuss if we'd be open to it. They've even talked about a few locations, a little more central, but nothing has been offered to us that's, you know, any kind of terms or anything that we could actually bring to you. A long-term lease was one idea, but then it would be a matter of building facilities on the site for some period of time where you could get your investment back.
So we really don't have a site that's already privatized, or...
No, sir. There are some private operations here and there. Capdublous County, which operates a facility to the south of our borders, out of Hiram, it's fairly convenient for the Hiram and the south end of the county. And then we've got the north end of the county with Seven Hills. But again, we kind of lack the central, and if we could do one mega facility, then that would be great. But again, locating it, we've got a lot of beautiful countryside out in the west side of the county. It's away from houses maybe, but not necessarily great for any of the residents of mine either in that neighborhood. No, we haven't seen a specific proposal. Be glad to look at one. And maybe that will come through in the next few months, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we haven't heard from a lot of citizens, but we've got some good back-and-forth comments and discussions. Been a value of... Any other comments? If none, we'll close this out. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask what the possibility of, I know they raised the tipping fee last year from 40 to 45, but from what I understand, that was only for commercials. So I was just wondering why we can't raise the tipping fee for the residential, and what's the possibility of using splash money?
Oh, that's been answered, you said it was...
Yeah.
Are you going to take the splash to answer, or you want me to?
I think between you and Tommy, you can answer that question if I can help.
I don't know about the fee issue so much, but you can't use splash dollars because when splash is voted on, it's voted on with the list of projects and what it's for, and the landfill is not included in the list, so we cannot use it for that.
And to addressing the tipping fees, just a little over a year ago, we did address that. We doubled our tipping fees for the first 300 pound foot out of County P. that come here. It's convenient for people on that side of Cobb County to come over and use our facility. And so we updated, we raised the price on that some, so maybe to help us and deter them coming so much, but they said, "Just keep coming." And we try to keep it low for our citizens on this side, but there's a lot of, according to Bruce Corr, has a lot of mom and pops that just enjoy taking their own home jobs. They don't want to pay somebody. They come once a month. And we try to keep it fairly low for them. But at the same time, we raise it over commercial folks, all those that are licensed outside the county for the dumping, to try to slow it down, so...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. No one else coming forward? I'm going to call this meeting to a close, and we will be back at 7:00. And we'll do a meeting, the regular meeting. So we stand adjourned. We need a motion, Mr....
I make a motion, we close the meeting in adjournment?
I have a motion by Mr. Powell, for a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis, all those in favor. Good evening and welcome. I will now call to order the Board of Commissioners' regular board meeting for July 26, 2018. Glad to have everyone up seeing the elected officials. Is there anyone who's signed up?
He's just kind of sitting low back there. He said, "Have the incident here with us from the Dallas City Council." We don't have the boy scouts with us today. I'm going to ask Post-Board Commissioner Tony Crowe to lead us in a prayer, and then lead us into the place to play.
Then let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we bow before you this evening. Father, we thank you for the honor and the privilege of serving on this Board of Commissioners and these men. We pray, Father, that you always give us the wisdom that we stand in need of. Father, always give us the courage if we need to follow through and do the things that are right for the county. We thank you, Father, for all these that are out here today and that come here and want to take part in the county business. We pray you bless them in a special way. And, Father, we just ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Start out with the minutes, as always. Action to adopt the July 10, 2018 work session minutes and the July 10, 2018 board meeting minutes. These are available for review, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Davis, his second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crowe. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. There are no announcements, no invited guests. Under bid awards, action to award to the Greenfield Road Deciling Relocation to the lowest responsible bidder, Wayne Coos Company Incorporated, in the amount of $296,335.00. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Powell, his second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Collette. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. There are no reports from committees and departments tonight. Under public participation on agenda items, Mr. Joel Arkin to speak on Rick Shaw. Come forward, Mr....
I don't need to speak unless you have questions for us.
Okay. Is that the same for Mr. Stevenson?
Yes, sir.
And I think we have Robert, Chair, for zoning.
Yes, sir.
My head now, this is the time when we open it up for your comments on this zoning issue.
Well, I felt like I embarrassed myself in the first meeting we had because...
Can you make sure your microphone's on?
I felt like I embarrassed myself in the first meeting we had because I'm a farmer, not a speaker. So I had to go home and write down my thoughts. Can I say it for the record? Certainly. All right. I'm a farmer, not a public speaker or politician. I'd like to answer the questions I was too nervous to adequately answer earlier in the planning meeting. I never apologize, but I'll clarify. At my farm, I intend to follow sustaining farming practices with a bare minimum of inorganic chemicals. My customers would not like that, nor would I. To those who are worried about the impact to the potential commercial value of their parents' property, I maintain my property in a state to which I would invite visitors always. They have no reason to be concerned on my behalf. As to the neighbor who is concerned about wholesale chemical usage in his pool, he has more chemicals in his pool than I would ever use on my plants. The commissioner who questioned that I may not realize the hazards of escaped livestock need not be concerned either. I was raised on a working farm and have worked a major ranch in Arizona. I get it. I understand the liability involved and am familiar with local agricultural zoning As to future plans, we will raise responsible and sustainable crops, add to our inventory as needed as demand dictates, and hold true to our principles. Eventually, we may even explore small-scale dairy production with dwarf, newbie, and goats. Those are those little goats I was describing. Making whatever we can sell or consume, keeping to the principles we have set for ourselves. We use compost for fertilizer, flowers and herbs, and companion planting for pest control, and shredded paper for malt, which I would love to get y'all's shredded paper. Our property is important to us as the only little piece of the earth that is totally under our control. I only hope the neighbors with commercial aspirations feel the same as us. I'm no great orator, but I know where my heart and my head and my business model lie. I'll try my best to be a good steward of the land I own in Paulding County, and I think that's the best you can ask of me. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd just, I'd like to say something real quick. I know it's not easy to get behind a microphone. You're not used to being behind a microphone, and you're used to doing what you're doing and not speaking.
Animals don't talk about it.
I've got to talk back. No, I appreciate you taking the time to write that down and come back and answer those questions. I do appreciate it. I know it's not easy to get behind a microphone all the time, and I appreciate that. And I would love to have a county full of people who care about their community and their land as much as you do.
And as for me, I got 17 acres where I'm at, and it won't be long that I intend to do something very similar to what you're doing. I may come over and pick your bread.
Please do. I'm learning every day, and please do. I still want your shredded paper. I'm getting shredded paper from the Jackson County Police Department and Health Department yet, but it's being delivered tomorrow. But I just wanted to redeem myself because I look like an idiot.
You did not this morning. You did a great job this evening also, but you didn't this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. You did not embarrass yourself. You did a good time this morning, this afternoon, and everything you said tonight, I understood from today, so you did a good job.
From the heart, yes.
Hey, Robert, I just want to tell you, I'm Cobb County, I'm your post-commissioner.
I bow to you for it.
This afternoon, I hope you did a fine job, and we need men like you with hearts like yours. And so thank you. I didn't have nothing to redeem, but you did a heck of a job this afternoon, and even better tonight. All right?
Consent agenda. Action on two consent agenda items. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve.
We approve by Mr. Davis, his second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Collette. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. Own business. Action on 2017-10-Z, application by Rick Shaw Real Estate, LLC to rezone approximately 50.57 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to PRD Planned Residential Development for subdivision development in Seven Hills. Property is located in land lots 484, 485, 524, 525, and 556, District 3, Sex and 3, north of Nature Walk Parkway, east of William Road, in post-war recommendation for program 501. The vote with 19 stipulations. This was tabled from the December 12, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting and then March 13, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve with the removal of six and nine stipulations.
I have a motion to approve with the amendment of removing stipulation number six and stipulation number nine. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Crowe, second by Commissioner Collette. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion with amendment carries five oh. Under new business, action to approve contract for services between Paulding County and Shepherd's Rest Ministries Incorporated to provide sheltering services for battered women and children. I will make a motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Crowe. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five oh. Here is five oh. Number two is action to approve the Board of Commissioners' direct purchase from ductile iron pipe and fittings from American Ductile Iron Pipe Company for up to $2,500,000 for the Richland Creek Water Supply Program Phase II Transmission Main and Booster Pump Station Project. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Crowe. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Powell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here is five oh. Number three, action to approve the Board of Commissioners' directly purchase the Booster Pump Station from EFI for $2,293,560.83 for the Richland Creek Water Supply Program Phase II Transmission Main and Booster Pump Station Project. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Crowe. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Number four is discuss action to approve FAA federal tentative funding of $150,000 with an estimated $13,888 Paulding County Airport authority match for designed primary surface improvement and additional wetlands mitigation. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Colette. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here is five oh. And number five is action to adopt Resolution 18-35, confirming executive session to the purpose of personnel pending potential litigation. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Colette. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Powell. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here is five oh. Moving to the Paulding County Plenary Commission meeting, 2018-5-Z, application by Robert Schuh to rezone approximately 9.88 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to A1 Agricultural for agricultural purposes. Property is located in land lot 101, 209, and 210, District 1, Section 3, south of Bridge Road, west of Baker's Reef Road, 4250 Ridge Road in post 2. Do I hear a motion?
Robert, motion to approve. Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Powell, the second by Commissioner Crowe. Is there any discussion? Motion carries... We vote first. He's flipping it, Robert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. 2018-06-Z, application by Carl and Roberta Walker to rezone approximately 1.289 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to B2 Highway Business for commercial use. Property is located in land lot 535, District 2, Section 3, the north side of Jimmy Lee Smith Parkway, east of Old Mill Road at 3745 Jimmy Lee Smith Parkway in post 1. Recommendation is approval. Vote was for 01 with the following, or with the 10 stipulations. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve with the 10 listed stipulations.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Colette. Is there any discussion?
Just like to say, there were a lot of things that came out of this planning and zoning this afternoon, and a lot of information that came up, so I would like to see neighbors be good neighbors and maybe get together to communicate, get something worked out. I think it's a possibility that can happen, so that's it.
All right, let's vote. Do all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here is five oh. That's the conclusion of our regular business. Executive session is not needed tonight. Public participation on non-agenda items, we have no one who has signed up. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Crowe. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Powell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.